Welcome everyone to the city council meeting, city of Lackawanna. December twenty first, two thousand and twenty. We'll start with our caucus, but before we do that, I would ask everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um, I'm having computer difficulties, so I don't have a, an agenda in front of me. I'm going to ask our city clerk to, um, uh, aid it, help us with the caucus and go through the items. Uh, and then we'll open up to the floor to any of the council members for any other contribution. Jeff?
All right. Uh, as usual, we're going to skip by the administrative items that we'll cover during the regular meeting and skip to item number five, city attorney, he requests the city council amend chapter thirty six of the city code, specifically thirty six nineteen B to change longevity for non bargaining unit personnel effective December two thousand and twenty. He's got a schedule here, ten years, twelve fifty, fifteen years, fifteen hundred, twenty years, twenty two hundred, and after twenty five years, twenty seven fifty. And this would, uh, put the non bargaining employees in a position that's commensurate with the bargaining.
Okay, that would seem to be reasonable to me. I understand the intent. Do any of the other council members care to, uh, comment on that request?
All right, um, with that, uh, is an ordinance that we'll cover during the regular meeting. Item number six, city attorney requests city council approve the attached resolution. Uh, it's to execute a funding agreement with the county that was previously approved uh, by the city council back in August of two thousand and twenty, and I believe, uh, director of development, Rich Stanton, has something to add to that.
Look, I can explain. Um, we had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar award from the county from an urban initiative program, and we had to identify what we were going to spend the money on um, before the end of the year, and the spending of the money is for the new city hall. Initially on design and engineering, and then after, um, this design both through seeker before we finalize it, and then we'll try hopefully move on to the construction end of it. So it's to use the county's money for design and engineering, and then anything left over on construction costs towards the new city hall.
So, Richard, is that, uh, is that why we're voting on it a second time?
Yeah, because there was no scope of services attached to initially or identified in initially. And to make it complete on what we're voting for, it needs a scope of services. And that's what's.
All right, again, Richard Stanton is, uh, director of development. Uh, thank you, Richard. Any of the council members wish to comment on item number six, or any questions from Mr. Stanton?
I have a question for Mr. Sanders. Tony, is the heat on in that building? What's going on with that, uh, uh, since everything was removed and it's what turned, did they turn the boilers back on?
Heat's on, yeah. Keep it at, uh, sixty degrees. I make sure somebody checks the, sometimes twice a week to make sure it's still intact in the building.
I had, I just have one more question around that building. Since all the walls have been removed, uh, is there, and I know that they were doing some shoring up, uh, just to make sure that there is significant shoring, but do we have enough shoring in that building? Should we get a very heavy flat roofed snowfall that can possibly do some damage, but should that building be sufficient as is? Or we need more?
No, with the new roof, we should have no problems at all. Any storm that comes out.
Okay. No questions on the agenda, I'm going to judge.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Savansky. Um, next, uh, anyone else have any comments on that, on, uh, number six?
Yeah, uh, councilman, sir, I did, I think I read that these, uh, services have to be bid out?
If there are, if we're going to use the county money, the answer is we need a competitive procurement policy.
Right, okay.
Can we piggyback off another county, uh, bid, or just be specific to our building?
Uh, they didn't identify that for me. They told me what they wanted, by the way, a criteria. Um, I can double check on the grand source, but we got to comply with the rules of, and general law, so.
Okay, very good.
One more question now. It says that this, this expires at December thirty first. The contract, is that extended, or do we have to extend it, or?
We have to, we have to approve it by December thirty first.
Okay.
That was.
Okay, anyone else? All right, um, Mr. City Clerk, can we move on to item number seven?
Yeah, just, just for the record, there is a resolution attached, item number six. Item number seven, uh, DPW commissioners requesting the council approve a temporary closure of the Warsaw Street Bridge due to its deteriorating condition. Uh, Tony?
Yeah, uh, I brought Jason Hay, who's our, our engineer on, to, uh, answer anybody's questions about the condition of the bridge, or, uh, the, the remedy to repair it, uh, replace it. So if you have any questions, please ask Jason now. Jason, you there?
Yes.
Jason, you're on mute. There you go. So, thank you, any councilman you have any questions about, go ahead.
I have a question, yeah. Um, I remember when I was in another capacity of the city, we had three bridges that were identified as challenging, but not red flagged, and that would have been the two on electric and the one on wood. This one was not identified. What's the significance, the challenges, uh, and recommendations? Is it rebuild, complete strip? Can we be repaired? Cheapest route possible, safest route possible? Jay, what do we got?
Okay, this is a, um, a phased question. I'll do my best to answer in, in order of the question. Um, the first thing is that, uh, the identify, identification of the red flag was provided this year. Um, what they had done was they had went up and under the bridge, and they had found that there is section loss in some of the steel members, uh, that are what they call basically simple arches underneath the bridge. There's a series of several arches that are then backfilled with concrete above them, um, and I beams that run lengthwise alongside of them. So, what has happened over the years, um, keep in mind this bridge is somewhere between like ninety and a hundred years old, if I'm not mistaken, um, is that, uh, there's been some, uh, basic deterioration on the bridge. In, in essence, it's actually done a substantial job in surpassing this traditional lifespan of a bridge, uh, or a structure of this nature. So, um, in, in the, the recommendations, uh, we did take a look at what the efficiency was. And what's happening is you've got, um, some basic rusting occurring that is then accelerated because of the moisture underneath the bridge. Uh, once that occurred, the, um, the, the basic section loss of that bridge is starting to expand pretty considerably. So, um, upon inspection, they found that the, the amount of section loss, uh, could theoretically a reduction in capacity of that bridge. So, as a result, they threw the red flag in, and, um, the, the essential process at, at that point is to contact the DOT, which we did, review the condition and assess whether or not a temporary fix can occur, um, or a permanent fix can occur. So, we investigated both. Um, the bridge itself is in, in, um, in a condition where, uh, a permanent fix is not likely because this, the structure itself will continue to deteriorate in a way that we can't really manage it for an extended period of time. So, the, uh, the options that we see are as follows. The first is to do a temporary closure of the structure, which is currently what is happening at the moment, and the reason for that is to comply with the New York State Department of Transportation's flagging conditions. Uh, we were not able to, uh, repair the bridge in a six week time span. So, in the, in the interim, we did a closure, and the DOT has removed it from its, um, its, uh, uh, its list of red flags, um, knowing that nobody will be traversing the, the bridge. Um, what you should consider at this point are the following two options, and that is um, a temporary fix, which will allow for somewhere between a five and ten year solution. Um, we estimate that to be somewhere between twenty and thirty thousand dollars, depending on, um, the availability of steel. Um, the fix that we've created and designed, uh, was approved by the Department of Transportation as a reasonable and, uh, solution. And, uh, we suspect it would take probably between two and three days to complete. Um, it could done at any point in time at this point, now that the DOT has authorized the repair and that the bridge has been closed in the interim. Alternatively, what can be considered, and, uh, we strongly recommend, is a plan for a long term solution, which would be a full replacement of the structure, uh, over the next five to ten years, if you elect to move forward with, uh, maintaining that structure. Um, we suspect that, uh, similar structures currently are running somewhere between eight hundred to one point one million dollars in repair costs with that includes the removal of the old structure. Um, if you include inflation, uh, there might be as much as another hundred thousand dollars on it, depending on when you decide to do it. So, somewhere in the, uh, you know, nine hundred thousand to one point million dollars is likely the, uh, the cost to do a full replacement. Um, if you wanted to do that and you were looking to set a plan into motion, uh, there's a couple of different options. You could look at federal aid to assist in the, uh, the structure, um, financing, or you could do a locally, uh, locally funded project. Now, I present those options only to draw your attention to the fact that, um, oftentimes federal aid sounds wonderful, and it does, uh, you know, occasionally, uh, saving a lot of costs, but the total cost of the project will, will definitely be higher by, uh, the two hundred, several hundred thousand dollars, just because of the time and effort it takes to go through that process. So, just keep that in mind, uh, as you, you know, you think about, uh, whether or not you'd like to put this on a long term plan, or like to try to utilize federal funding, uh, as a source of, uh, repair.
Jason, um, the state a few years ago offered some bridge, uh, repair relief.
Yes.
Um, that window is now closed, I'm assuming, and the state's not going to be nearly as generous with COVID ransacking its budget. Um, should we do the first phase, which is the third, the twenty to thirty thousand? Get it out of the red flag situation? Could we then, should the state or the feds, if we get off the red flag list, would we be able to, uh, pursue state or federal funds to help offset the cost for the long term project?
So, right now you are off the list. Um, I, I just want to make, make that, uh, clear. Uh, because you have done a temporary closure, you, you now have the time to do whatever you feel is best, uh, in order to make, you know, whatever the next step, uh, feasible. Now, some of the conditions that you'd like to consider while you're making these, these, uh, considerations is to determine whether or not that means of access is critical to the transportation system. If it is critical, you know, uh, to what level of need is it? Uh, in my understanding and discussions with, with Tony DeSantis is that emergency services are saying that there's essentially zero reduction, or excuse me, zero time added to response. Uh, which is always the number one concern when you're, when you're considering a structure, uh, the viability of a structure or the need for a structure. Um, so, with, with that in mind, um, I, you know, I, I err on the side of, um, if the, the council needs to be, uh, vigilant with its resources right now, I would suggest uh, leaving the structure closed and in retaining those resources, um, and developing a plan to, uh, repair it in the future, or to replace it in the future.
Uh, Jason, let me just get this clear for my, this, this is Fred Marano. Uh, Jason, uh, how often is this bridge inspected?
Hey Fred, um, this bridge, I believe, is on the biannual inspection process, which I believe is every two years. Um, now that, um, there was a flag, they will do a supplemental inspection once a year. But, uh, those are the only timeframes that the, uh, the DOT typically utilizes for inspection.
So, i- i- in, in your opinion, was it feasible for the condition of this bridge, uh, given the fact that it's inspected every two years? Um, could deteriorate from a yellow to a red, or whatever the color, uh, code is to a red? Uh, not usable, not safe, in, in, in that short of period of time?
Well, uh, the answer to that is yes. Uh, actually, things like that can happen in a matter of days, depending on a number of different atmospheric conditions. You never know what could come down that, that creek and strike a bridge, right? So theoretically, you could be in perfect condition, and then the next day you might have to have a problem. So, when you have deterioration issues like we're having here, um, those things do happen. Once they do, they start to accelerate. So, we, we're finding right now that this condition is an accelerated, um, rusting condition where we're losing section loss, uh, pretty quickly. And what the, the conditions are, it's hard to explain this, but I'm going to do my best to do so, and this structure is what they call, uh, it's a redundant structure. So, what that means is basically that there's a number of different systems that make the structure up. And as a result of that, this structure is extremely complex, and it's usually extremely strong. Um, we currently, no one has a method to assess this, this structure because of the way that it's been built. Okay, so we can't, we cannot actually analyze this, this system to prove that it can handle a certain volume of weight. But what we do know is that with the amount of steel that it's losing, it is losing its efficiency in supporting that weight. So this is one of those things where the Department of Transportation is saying, look, you need to err on the side of caution, and we need to do something in, in order to repair it, to, to, um, bypass that space, that condition, which we can do with the steel that we're proposing in the fix. Or you need to shut it down until you come up with a long term plan, which would be replacing the structure. So that's where we're at right now, is, you know, we can't, we can't analyze it to tell you that it can indefinitely hold five or ten thousand, or, uh, ten tons, but what we do know is that it's certainly not as capable as it used to.
Okay, and, and I thank you for clearing that up, uh, for me, Jason. I just couldn't understand how this happened so quickly, but I guess that is possible.
Jason, let me ask this. If we were to do, uh, phase one first, the twenty to thirty thousand, would that allow so vehicles can continue to pass over it, or would that just be, um, keeping it from falling in?
You, you would, uh, you'd be able to, um, have traversable vehicles over the bridge. Um, it would still be at the, uh, reduced load rating, but it would be, um, certainly traversable for, uh, for your daily traffic, yes.
Okay.
And Jason, you said, if we do, if we do do the phase one, that that would could potentially last between five to ten years?
Uh, yes, uh, the, the problem that we foresee with the, with what we're, we'll, we'll discuss as phase one here is that bridge is already, um, in the flood plain, and it does not have the hydraulic capacity to accommodate, um, a severe flood. And so what we're seeing right now, and this is kind of getting down the rabbit hole, but you, you guys are asking the right questions for a, a good planning process, so I'd, I'd like to share it if I can. Um, and that is,
Sure.
as you're considering the, these, these options, um, there are other factors in play, and one of them, uh, which we, you know, I'd like to present is that uh, the bottom quarter of that bridge, the lowest point of that bridge is actually, it's, it's restricting flow. Uh, when you have, uh, big storms and, and capacities of the fi- the hundred year storm. Um, we are seeing substantially more often, uh, storms that are hitting or exceeding the one hundred year storm now. So, the, the opportunity for that to be, um, to actually for the water to go up and over that bridge is, is growing by the, by the day. And the reason that we're seeing a lot of this deterioration on the bridge is because of the high water and the moisture that's developing and sitting underneath that bridge. So if we do this repair, the, when the water rises, the steel that we put in there is going to slowly, but surely it's going to start to rust, and over time, it will too lose its capacity to support the rest of the structure, and that's why we're making sure that the city understands that what we're proposing is really the only solution, but it is also a temporary solution.
Yeah, well, we're at the time of the year that we could experience a serious ice jam too.
That's, that's very, that's mu- very much correct, Fred, and that's, uh, that's another consideration that uh, could certainly impact what we're proposing, because it will, uh, the steel that we're suggesting is going to be fastened to the front of that abutment, and, uh, that too is, is actually working its way into restricting the amount of water that can go through that, that system.
Sure, sure.
Tony, you been trying to say something? Tony, you been trying to say something?
Well, he answered most. Yeah, he answered most what I was, what I was trying to ask, but, uh, I just, I just think personally, this is my opinion, that us putting a thirty thousand plus Band-Aid on it, 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 to me, it just doesn't make much sense. Um, and so, just my opinion is I would suggest we keep it closed until we have a, a rebuild, you know, we could find finance to rebuild the bridge. Just wanted to just let, put that out there. I've talked to, uh, Mr. Wolf, I talked to both police and fire chiefs. It doesn't restrict any response time to any emergencies being, being the bridge closed. So, I don't know, you know, spending thirty thousand dollars now doesn't make sense to me, but that's up to, that's up to you guys and, and.
Yeah, and, and I would echo Tony's, uh, statement there. Um, given the uncertainty of the world that we live in, and um, the fact that this, this particular access point is not something that's necessary. Um, you know, it's, it's of my opinion, um, take it with a grain of salt, that, uh, maybe the, uh, the funds that are, that would be otherwise necessary for this could be, uh, utilized in a, in a, in a better place at the moment.
Well, I will say that it's a lot easier to come up with thirty thousand dollars now than a million dollars anytime, so. Just saying.
Well, at least we have time we could maybe suggest a work session or something along those lines to give us some time to, to plan this out, talk with our city controller and mayor and see what, uh, how best to per- to proceed with this problem. As long as we're okay with traffic flow and, and safety precautions, we can leave the bridge closed till we've had a chance to work on this.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
With the, can I say something?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, Councilman Servick?
With the, uh, new presidency, and I think there's going to be a push for interest structure bill for building, rebuilding bridges and roads. You know, in the very near future, I'm thinking, within a year or two. So there might be some money coming down the tubes here for, uh, from the federal government. I don't know if we'd qual- that bridge would qualify or not, but, uh, it's something to think about.
I, I, I wouldn't hold, uh, my breath on air. Congressman Higgins proposed a one trillion dollar United States infrastructure bill about ten years ago and got laughed off the floor. Um, I mean, every president is talking about infrastructure, I just saw the floor. Uh, infrastructure is a challenge everywhere. It's only getting worse every year. They should do something, but I haven't heard anything. I hope they do.
All right, anyone have any other questions or comments for Jason?
John, you were about to say something earlier, Mr. Ingram?
No, I'm good. I was listening. I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Anyone else?
Jason, is there any, any more information we should have on this bridge? I mean, you're very thorough with your, with your educating us. Um, is there anything else that, um, we should know of?
Only that, um, to your point about the fact that thirty thousand dollars now is less than a lot later, which is absolutely true as well. Um, I should note that there doesn't appear to be much else in the way of substantial, um, deficiencies. However, if we were to find some other deficiencies, they would, they would likely be similar to this. Um, and again, they're reasonably simple corrections as far as, uh, you know, the operations go, and if, if there were additional corrections necessary, uh, the, the work to do it would be, you know, a little bit less each time, uh, because you've already got some work done. So, you know, just keep, keep that in mind where, you know, you, where you're making your decisions.
Now, let me ask this. There were three bridges challenged before or identified before. Um, this one was identified this year. Are there any other bridges that were inspected this year that we're going to find out were having some challenges?
Uh, again, uh, not this year. Um, there will be another round for, um, the other bridges next year in their biennials. Um, but they, they seem to all be in pretty decent shape. I mean, um, I will give, tip my hat to Lackawanna's construction methods from a hundred years ago. They were definitely built strong. Uh, so, um, you know, but I, I would recommend, uh, maybe at a work session, talk about, um, like a program to, uh, to consider this and maybe work with the DOT that to do a detailed projection for future, so that you guys can look as far down the road as twenty, thirty years, and, and, uh, you know, take a, a closer look at what might happen, uh, within those timeframes as a council and say, all right, maybe we should really think about doing a program where we, we plan on replacing or repairing a bridge every five or ten years kind of thing.
Right. Yeah, it would also give us time to plan or put aside money towards those ends over a period of time, and so when something like this does occur, we're not caught, uh, flat footed financially.
Correct, yep.
Yeah. Okay, Jason, uh, anyone else have any questions to Jason? If not, then Jason, thank you. We will be in touch. Hopefully we'll be able to set up a work session as you suggested with DOT and, and formulate some kind of a game plan, um, soon.
All right, not a problem. Uh, I hope you guys all well and, uh, happy holidays, and if, uh, you need anything else, you have my cell phone, don't hesitate to give me a call.
Thanks, Jason. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Jason. Good luck at Rusty Nickel Brewery.
Thanks, guys. Cheers.
Plug in. All right.
All right, number eight. Number eight, DPW commissioners requesting, uh, temporary elimination of parking on Ridge Road between Route Five and Electric.
Uh, this matter has been, been kicked along, kicked around for a little while. Um, I don't know if the other council members had a chance to talk to you, Tony. Um, but I, I've given it some thought, and, um, I, I, I know we're expecting some kind of a snowstorm possibly this coming weekend or over the Christmas holiday. But, uh, it, I don't know if it's possible just to, uh, hold still and, and, and do the best we can with the situation as it exists. We've got to work our way through two more months of this possibly. Uh, what, what do you say, Tony?
Um, you know, it's, it's, I, I really don't know what to say. I, I just feel that, I know part, eliminating parking is a big issue, especially on that road, you know, during the course of the day and on the weekends for churches. My only concern is any liability to the city if there's any accident happening, because our plows have to be on, off across that double yellow line. You know, people, people don't respect plows anymore. They'll pass you on the left, on the right. Uh, it's, it'll be a very slow goal, but if that's what everybody prefers, then that's fine with me. Whatever you guys decide. But I'm just trying to bring you guys options and keep aware of what's going on.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Tony, and, and just as you said, people don't respect snowplows. They don't respect the center yellow lines either. If, if anybody's in their way, they go around them however they can. So the yellow line, I mean, is, it, and, and if there's snow on the ground, who's going to see it anyway? So I, I am, I'm inclined to, to just let the matters, uh, as they are and and take, and instruct your guys to be as, as, as diligent and, uh, aware as they are, as they can be when they're driving the plows. But to ask people to move on, on the side streets that are crowded and congested now, I, I don't see that happening.
Well, I spoke to a couple plow drivers in the last few days, and, uh, they really would like this passed because they can't drop their wing uh, way, the, the way the road is constructed right now, and, uh, I, I think that, um, again, this is, this is another temporary repair for, uh, a situation, but I think that, um, in my view, this is pretty important to them, and if they're keeping our streets open, I think that we should, um, can, we should consider moving this. Just my two cents.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Savansky. Anyone else have any comments, comments on this issue?
I think it's going to be very difficult to try to enforce, especially with the churches and stuff, and, uh, with the parking and stuff. Um, I agree that we need to try to do something, but if we don't get it, you know, it's, it's going to be a problem with the president.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Ingram. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, when you plow from, uh, Electric to South Park, are, are you running into the same problem? I mean, you have parking on both sides of the street. Uh, you can't drop a wing there anyways. Uh, uh, I don't, I don't see why.
Well, you.
I understand about.
Actually, it, it, the, the.
Okay, I didn't catch that, Tony. Would you repeat it?
And that section of the road.
Tony, can you start over? You froze. You froze, Tony. Can you start over?
Yeah, on that section, that part of the road, the WL line is in the middle, so both travel lanes are equally distant. Uh, where the bike path, bike path is, the eastbound lane is smaller With the parking on that side. So you only have eleven feet there. Our plows with the blades down are thirteen feet. Um, It, it, it's just the stripe of the road. It's, it's just different with the bike path.
Well, if the, with the parking as it existed before, could they drop a wing or not?
Yes. Even with the parking, you're still able to drop a wing. Tandem are down the road. But this way, we, we're unable to tandem. You're unable to drop a wing plow. You're only plowing with your front blade.
We would also be pretty close to plowing them in anyway if they're parked there. Isn't that correct, Tony? If it was one of those heavy snowfalls.
Would plow them in. Correct.
Yeah. Um, and I believe the conversation, uh, Mr. Council President was that Uh, the enforcement would only be if it, I mean, it's kind of difficult to randomly enforce, but Um, if it's like a daily today and I can see the road, Uh, I don't think they'd be ticketed. It's when, when the plows have to come out that we'd have to have them move Uh, and find a different spot. But again, like you said, My cutoff to winter is right around St. Patrick's Day because that's give or take a snowstorm and within a week of that, but And every day we're closer to St. Patrick's Day and we're not shoveling is a good day in Buffalo. So uh, this is again, my recommendation is short term. And.
Well, you, you raise a, a good mitigating factor as far as not enforcing any parking ban Uh, if it's not snowing. But what if there's a snowfall overnight that people are unaware of? Uh, they're not planning for and they're parking there. Uh, are they going to get ticketed then? They're going to get used to not being ticketed as long as it, it doesn't snow. And if, as long as the snowstorm hits during the day When people are normally out and, and have access to the vehicles. If the, if the snowfall happens overnight or continues overnight, uh, and they don't make arrangements, they're going to get stuck with that uh, A possible ticket. Uh, it's, it's not a good situation, I don't think, however you look at it, but But you do raise a mitigating factor and I think we appreciate that.
Well, well, how about, I mean, I mean, Mr. Wolf, perhaps you might know, how often are people parking there overnight? That's, if I drive down there, There might be a business here and there that may have some people parking on the side, but it's mostly during the day if I'm not mistaken. I'm not.
Mostly during the day, but You really get, you guys don't want to open up this can of worms with parking on the wrong side With or without snow because then you're going to start The side streets, people are going to say, well, there ain't no snow. Why can't I park there? Whatever you guys decide to do on Ridge Road between Route Five and Electric, You guys will do, the, the police department will uh, will assist any way they can. But I don't think we should be bringing up uh, snowfall, no snowfall things.
Well, are you in favor of an uh, parking ban then?
I'm, I'm indifferent to the ban. Uh, uh, it's Tony's men that are the ones that are dealing with, with uh, With the possibility.
And we understand that, but your, your people, your, your department's dealing with Um, emergency situations and ticketing, which is enforcement. How do you feel about that? Uh, don't, we know how Tony's guys feel.
Okay, well, we don't, we don't have any parking in the city to begin with. Uh, it's tough to park anywhere now as it is. Uh, my biggest, my biggest issue is the uh, The, the, the access Community building there and the churches on Ridge Road in the first ward. Uh, what if there's a snowstorm on Sunday? Are we going to make elderly people across the street? Where, where are they going to park? How are they going to get there? Uh, Again, There's two sides to this. So I, I understand where Tony and his men are coming from, totally do. And if you, if the council passes it, The police will enforce it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or cam, comments on this?
Can I ask one thing?
Sure.
So if the blades are thirteen feet, why, why was it set up? Why were those lanes set up that for the bike paths and all that? Only eleven feet. That, that should have been a red flag right away. Do you, you understand what I'm saying?
Who are you asking that question?
Well, anybody. I'm just saying, the, the When we set the bike paths up, If there was only eleven feet wide and our plows were thirteen feet, You know, that should have been a problem right away.
If, if I understand the problem correctly, it's not the bike path. It's where the center line is. Is that, is that accurate, Tony?
Yes.
Okay, nothing else has changed then?
And, and you still, if, if there was no parking that side of the road, you, you'd have Uh, fifteen feet, I believe, from center lane Uh, on the, on the uh, south side of the Ridge Road.
So it's just been the replacement and the relocating of the center line. That's the issue here, right?
Correct.
Okay. Other than that, if the plow is on the other, uh, i- i- if it exceeds over and crosses over the yellow Double yellow line, they can still drop the wing. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Our only concern is I'm coming traffic when we're plowing it. Go ahead.
If, if people don't get out of the way of a plow, how, you just, they don't do that anyway, right?
It doesn't, like, people drive, you know how people drive. I can't, I can't really say what I want to say now, but people just don't respect any.
We, we understand.
Your honor, I had to drive in the fire truck with lights and sirens and it won't get out of my way.
Yeah, I see what I, I see what you mean.
I had a car come straight at me. I had to stop the truck And the, the passenger grabbed the steering wheel of the car to get her out of my way. So There's just bad drivers out there. That's all there is. So.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion on this?
I have, uh, Council President, I have one question. Uh, so where, where are we leaning on this when it comes time during the meeting? Are we looking at passing it, not passing it? Uh, you know, are we looking to table it? What are we, what are we thinking here? Just so I could be prepared when the meeting starts.
I would like to put it up for a vote.
Yeah, I don't know if we're in favor of it or not. I, I it's hard to gauge what all the other council members are thinking. Um, I, I think the argument boils down to the fact that there's a center line That shifts more to the south because of the bike lanes. And If the plows are required to follow the existing and the new center line, they can't drop the wing And the parking on the south side of Ridge Road is going to be an issue. Uh, however, If the, if you treat that center line as where it existed before, Which is, I don't know how many feet short of where it existed before. You can drop the wing and people can still park there. I think this is what it comes down to. And is there a liability issue? Yes. But every time the plows take the streets, there are liability issues. As, as Councilman Moretti just indicated, you could have sirens and lights going and people don't move anyway. So it boils down to whether or not we want uh, to enforce a, a, a parking ban Uh, that will only be enforced if we have a heavy snow and the plows have to get out there and plow, which is an if come in my opinion.
Which is going to be a problem.
Okay, I guess we'll wait for the vote.
Yep. Number nine?
All right, the DPW commissioner requesting the council approve an easement agreement between the city of Lackawanna and the Hamburg Turnpike LLC. Have you received a copy of that?
And if I'm, if I understand this correctly, this has to do with um, The coffee company down, down in the, uh, on, on Route Five?
Yes, it does.
And, and it does, and Director Stan, does that um, Does that aid them in, in, in their, what I understand, their intention to uh, add on to their facility Uh, in the Bethlehem Steel property?
Not on the Bethlehem Steel property. They own two properties. They own twenty-five-ten, um, where they do the coffee and they own twenty-five-twenty Where they do the food, the food vending, Queen City, I don't know, I want to call it Queen City Foods. It's Queen City. Um,
Is that the one in construction right now?
Yes, and that's what this is related to. To get water, to get water into twenty-five-twenty, They need, they need to come in off somewhere. And there is a paper street called Swan where there's a twelve-inch water main on it. And they just want a parallel Albright about six feet off of Albright, six feet west of Albright And come in about thirty-five feet across that paper street. It doesn't interfere with our development plans. It's just an easement to get a water line through so they can.
Is that a permanent event, Director?
Yes, it is. They have to take care, they have to take care of it. It's almost like a lateral Where the water company doesn't want it. They want these guys to have to take care of their water line if it breaks. That's what this is.
Will any, will anyone else have to access that, that area in the future? Any future construction? Or any, anything like that?
It's a paper street, so if it gets improved as a street that'll be on the surface of this thing. Um, it doesn't really seem to conflict with anything. It's just a lateral and it hugs, it hugs the other streets pretty well.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any comments or questions on that?
Uh, I think you hit on it, Judge, but so Rich, to, to clarify, we authorize the easement. Uh, we're not going to jeopardize any potential future development from anybody else trying to set up on any properties, will it?
No, it really doesn't. It's, 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 the street is well laid out even though it wasn't built to get access in there. And it's, it's the right place. It's about thirty-five feet. I mean, it's about thirty-five feet long and six feet off of Albright. So it's really not much different than a utility corridor along Albright.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you. Uh, should we move on to number uh, ten?
Number ten, the city controller is requesting that the council approve an ordinance uh, to close out the LED street lighting project and transfer the reimbursement from National Grid to the, the general fund.
Anyone have any questions on that?
None.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ordinance attached to that. Number eleven, city controller requests the council approve uh, another ordinance Uh, that transfers funds to the capital fund to pay for the Milnor Keever paving project and that project is utilizing CDVG funding of two hundred thousand dollars.
Anyone have any questions on that? Okay, thank you. Let's move on.
Okay, uh, after that, we've got communications from citizens. Uh, Marie Edwards, the founder and president of Ten Lives Club, sent an email Uh, providing the city council with the information as to how their organization is assisting Lackawanna residents with their stray cats and personal needs and also assisting residents with spay neuter services. Uh, in that email, the Ten Lives Club is seeking uh, three thousand dollars in remuneration for their services. Uh, I just put the email in for you guys to go over. I'm not sure uh, what arrangements, if any, were made.
Uh, uh, if I can address that briefly, uh, a number of us did meet with um, Marie Edwards and we did uh, view and tour the facility. They do uh, remarkable work there To help, to help control the uh, feral cat population. Uh, they do, they do exist on donations. When uh, we came back from that meeting, uh, I remember speaking with our mayor Indicating that that might be uh, money well spent if the city could afford it. And uh, there was Uh, some discussion about putting the three thousand dollars into the budget. Uh, whether that was done or not, I ha, I don't know. But that, that was discussed. There was no, There were no promises made, obviously, and there's no contract entered into. Um, and, and at that point in time, seeing the work that that was being done With our feral cat, cat population, which apparently in some people's opinion uh, is significant. Um, a, a goo, a good portion of the city members, city council members were in favor Of uh, amending our current red uh, ordinances to reflect Uh, a change in um, Quasi-criminal prosecution for feeding uh, stray cats And encouraging feral, the feral cat population and then inviting and passing legislation, which would enable A trap, uh, neuter, vaccinate and release program that the, that this company would be part of. Uh, and everybody we've seen, or a majority of us seem to be in favor of that Until it came to our attention that there is also an ongoing feeding uh, component to this program, Which then kind of turned everybody off because um, of the various or, or the obvious Potential to attract other uh, vermin. Uh, that, that may not be um, Um, conducive to the program and within our thinking of how to control this, this uh, this feral cat population. But getting back to where the three thousand dollars that had been uh, talked about, uh, I thought it was going to be placed in, in the um, Budget, but whether it has or not, I don't know. So maybe the best thing to do is receive and file this, maybe forward it to the controller Or to the mayor. I don't know.
I will uh, just give some insight as to putting money in budgets for organizations. Um, we did when I was second ward councilman many years ago and Mayor Polanski put money in the budget for The Chamber of Commerce, uh, the Lackawanna Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we left that in there for quite some time until it was brought to our attention and that could be considered a gift of public funds. And then therefore we had to remove it from the budget. Um, no one was against the Chamber of Commerce. We all liked how Mike Sobazik worked As director. Unfortunately, once that was brought to our attention, we did some research and it was discovered that That did indeed uh, become part of the gift of public funds to um, a non-government organization. So Just keep that in consideration. I'm not against cats. I love cats. I love animals. Um, I wasn't included in any meetings. I was, I think this is before I came on, while Councilman Schultz was still running Um, regarding decisions or the conversations with this club. Um, but just, just be careful with, with that. I'm not, like I said, I'm not against cats or animals or their operation, but we should Have Mr. Drew to look into whether we can actually Forward funding from our taxpayers to that organization.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. That, uh, that would be, in my understanding, would have been a payment Uh, in lieu of services um, rendered for the neutering, for the trapping, the neutering And the vaccinating of the animals. But you raised a good point. Thank you. Uh, anyone else?
May I say something on that? So in, in the budget, there was money put aside for trapping And uh, trying to get rid of the feral cat problem. Uh, but Again, it was as Mayor, uh, as Jeff Semansky said, that As long as it's not a gift of public funds, as in a donation, if they're actually providing a service, there's money, there was money set aside.
Yeah, yeah, I, I thought it was, it was intended to be a service. And in fact, they had already provided that service Because there's a substantial feral cat population uh, off of South Park Um, near the old railroad tracks in that area. And I think they um, Expended quite a, an effort in, in trying to clean up that population. So I, I mean, it's something that we should have an opinion from the city attorney on. But uh, if the money's there, it may be considered well spent. And I do think we should revisit this whole concept. If we can a, address the issue of, of continuous feeding, which, which no one seems to be Uh, in favor of, maybe we can come to some arrangement or contract Or understanding with this company to address the feral cat population. So and, and, and other than that, we should receive and file this.
I was, yeah, I was with you. I was one of the person that went to the cat thing, which, with some of us. Um, and they do a good job. So I think we should, you know, talk about a little more. That's my opinion. But I just also got a, I, I just heard um, Jeff talked about the Chamber of Commerce and stuff about money that we gave to the chamber. I said, we need to understand something about the Chamber of Commerce, and I think it's a misconception. The Chamber of Commerce, you, the cities are a lot of money, but they must be doing something for the city. If they're like advertising for the city, you can give them money. You know, as, as a former chamber member of two chambers, whatever, you can actually, they can ask for money. But they must showcase what they do with it. You know what I'm saying? They can ask the city for money. And I think I stated when you first, when you gave the first money to Mike, because if the chamber was doing what they're supposed to do, is a great asset to the city.
Okay, Councilman Ingram, thank you very much. And I, I Okay, Councilman Ingram, thank you very much. And I, I think, uh, our city attorney might plug that in. Uh, so that, um, in the event we have a viable chamber again, that, that's something that could be looked at. All right, anyone else? If not, then let's move on.
All right, number thirteen is a communication from Mr. James Sabuda from Orchard Park. Uh, he sent a letter to my office and I guess it also went to the Director of Development and a few others. Uh, regarding Code Enforcement Officer Scott Hayes. Uh, it was a very complimentary letter, uh, praising his complete and true professionalism and guiding Mr. Sabuda through what he called a very chaotic morning. Uh. So that is now a, uh, for the council to acknowledge.
Yeah, I, I think we should all acknowledge and thank Scott Hayes for his, his, his efforts. Um. He, uh, he responded, uh, exceptionally above and beyond what he was required and, and, uh, he certainly deserves our, uh, our accolades and, uh, and a substantial thanks from this body. Um, I don't know if anyone else is familiar with what he did, but if you want to add your comments, you'd be more than welcome to.
He does a great job and he's overworked.
And underpaid.
Underpaid, yes.
Can I say something, Mr. Council President?
Absolutely.
Kevin Surtike, uh, I called Mr. Sabuda today. He's a good friend of mine from back in our days running around Roland Avenue and Elkhart and Wood Street. He grew up on, uh, Roland. And his father, Anthony, was a policeman in Lackawanna. I don't know. He's probably, I think he's still still alive and retired in Florida. And, uh, he told me the whole story and he was so, so impressed with Scott. He, he was asking me, how old was he? He didn't, he didn't even know how old, if he was an older gentleman or I said, no, he's a young guy. In fact, we just, uh, the mayor just appointed him permanent a couple of weeks ago. And he was, uh, he couldn't say enough good things about Scott. And I said, of course, he's from the fourth ward.
Uh, yeah, sure.
And, uh, so I just wanted to throw that in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Surtike. Anyone else? If not, let's move on to the next item.
The next item is also a communication. Uh, this is from, uh, Mr. Patrica, Arch J. Patrica, Attorney at Law. And a simple request that, uh, the council reappoint Nancy Patrica and Mary Vallone as Commissioner of Deeds. It's, uh, we do this every two years with them.
Yeah, I, I don't think there should be a problem with that. If there is any discussion, you're welcome to at this point. If not, let's move on.
All right, and lastly, uh, business registration, Brian O'Hara doing business as Brian O. Tree Sales, which is a seasonal Christmas tree sale. Uh, in this particular instance, at fourteen sixty-six Abbott Road across from Moochies. Uh, the former, uh, tree sales that used to occur to DPW on South Park.
All right, anybody have any issues on that?
I wish I would have bought a tree for him because the one I bought, uh, remember in a Christmas story when it said, it's not one of those trees where all the needles fall off and they shake it? I have needles all over my living room floor. This, this tree is old as hell. Sorry, I should have bought it from that guy. That's all I got.
I would like to say some awesome, special thanks for him to donating that tree, uh, for our city hall decorations.
Councilman Moretti, thank you for making that overture, for, for securing that tree. Uh, we thank both parties, yourself, uh, Councilman, uh, and the owner of the business. So, very good. Uh, anything else?
Quickly, if I may, if we're handing out thanks.
What was that?
Brian, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you to Caitlin Di Pasquale and her crew uh, of volunteer decorators for getting the job done on that tree this year. If we're handing out tree thanks, I think they need to be recognized as well.
Sure.
Thank you, Brian. And the council thanks, uh, her and all her, her helpers. She did a great job. It's beautiful, a beautiful job. Thank you.
DPW too.
And them too.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Council President, can I say one thing too?
Yes, sir. Go, go ahead.
Uh, I just want to, uh, since we're giving thanks to people. Today was the DPW. They're giving out the toys today. They had the toy drive.
Um, yes.
They're giving out to nineteen families, forty-seven kids. They had seven thousand dollars in donations. Um, they've started at five o'clock today. They're still out there delivering donations to the fans of Lackawanna. Uh, I just want to give the, uh, like Kate Di Pasquale, Rob Reese, and Lisa Reese. They organize this. They start in the fall and it takes all year to do this. It's, it's, it's a pretty big event. It's probably the biggest we've had so far this year or this time. Uh, and some of the other helpers, Jay Adam, Pete O'Connor, Dave Cruz, Joe Guillen, Matt Mendez, Jake Kowalski, Alex Rodriguez, Dan Gurkin, Greg Koalit. Uh, I just want to say thanks to them and they do a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner, and, and the council extends their thanks to a very warm and heartfelt thank you, especially at this time of the year. Great job to all.
It is a lot of work and I do appreciate all their efforts. And Tony, uh, your leadership is tremendous with them and, uh, you know, they really take great pride in this event and, uh, I'm not going to fill up us most, much more time, but uh, job well done all the way around. Um, but they really, they really take a great pride in that event. So, great job though.
Also, just to add to that too, is the Lackawanna Fire Department last weekend did their, uh, uh, food distribution. I think it was around anywhere about fifteen families. Uh, they raised a substantial amount of money and, uh, brought food and, uh, gift certificates to these families. And this has been going on since, uh, I believe nineteen ninety-seven and, uh, uh, they did a great job as usual.
Thank you, Councilman Moretti, and accolades to the fire department also. Anyone else? If not, are there any other items, um, Mr. City Clerk?
No, that completes the agenda unless the council has anything they'd like to add, uh, regarding old business or tabled items. That concludes the agenda.
Uh, in that case, I would formally call the, uh, city council, a meeting for December twenty-first, twenty twenty to order. Would you take the role, Council, um, uh, clerk, uh, city clerk?
Be happy to, sir. Uh, Council Ingram?
Here.
Simansky?
President.
Moretti?
Here.
Surtike?
President.
Morano?
Here.
Department Head's Law? We lose Rick?
I'm here. Sorry, I was muted.
Uh, Development?
Here.
Public Works?
Here.
Public Safety?
Here.
Controller?
Here.
Recreation?
Here.
Uh, hearings from citizens, uh, I have not received, uh, today prior to noon, any communications from citizens. So we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December seventh, twenty twenty.
The DOT minutes is written.
Second, Morano.
We've got a motion by Simansky, second by Morano, to adopt minutes of the regular meeting of December seventh, twenty twenty is written. Ingram?
Here.
Simansky? Demansky?
I'm here too, and yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero, departmental reports, one through four.
Motion to receive and file department heads, uh, department reports, one through four.
Morano seconds.
Motion by Simansky, second by Morano, to receive and file departmental reports, one through four. Ingram?
Yes.
Simansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero, communications from Department Division Heads, number five, city attorney requests city council amend chapter thirty-six of the city code. Specifically, section thirty-six dash nineteen B to change longevity for non, non-bargaining unit personnel effective December of twenty twenty as follows. After ten years of service, twelve fifty, after fifteen years of service, fifteen hundred, after twenty years of service, twenty-two hundred, and after twenty-five years of service, twenty-seven fifty. And that, uh, the above amendment would place city hall non-bargaining employees in a position commensurate with our bargaining unit employees.
Motion to receive and act on ordinance.
Second.
Morano seconds.
We've got a motion by Simansky, second by Surtike, to receive and file act on ordinance. Ingram?
Yes.
Simansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero, the ordinance amending chapter thirty-six, personal policy, personnel policies of the City of Lackawanna Municipal Code, specifically city code, chapter thirty-six dash nineteen B shall be rescinded and replaced with the same language as per the above language.
Motion, that ordinance is written. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, who made the motion?
Demansky.
Who's the second?
Surtike.
Okay, so I got a motion by Simansky, second by Surtike, to adopt ordinance is written. Ingram?
Yeah.
Simansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero, number six, city attorney.
Mr. Clerk, I just jumped in real quick. Uh, Council President, has your computer been, uh, turned back on? Are you able to? Or are you still doing phone and, and not seeing the, the screen? Just curious.
Thank you, thank you for calling to my attention that, that the computer shut down, but I, I, I'm back on again.
Okay, you're back on. Okay, okay, yep.
All right, so number six, city attorney requests city council approve the attached resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a funding agreement with the county that was previously approved by the city council on August seventeenth, twenty twenty. I think he's looking for you, Mr. Council President.
Morano, so moves.
Second.
I got a motion by Morano, second by Simansky, receiving file act on resolution. Ingram?
Yes.
Simansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero, the resolution authorizing the scope of services attached to the contract between the County of Erie and the City of Lackawanna, New York is hereby approved and the mayor is reaffirmed to have the authority to execute the attached funding agreement with the County of Erie.
The DOT resolution is written.
Morano seconds.
They got a motion by Simansky, second by Morano, to adopt resolution is written. Ingram?
Yes.
Simansky?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
This regard, Moretti?
Yes.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero, number seven, DPW Commissioner requests city council approve a temporary closure of the Warsaw Street Bridge due to its deteriorating condition. This closure would need to stay in place until it is determined what further action is necessary.
Motion to approve request. Second by Morano.
Seconds.
Okay, uh, I had two seconds there. Who's, uh?
Moretti seconded.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Simansky, second by Moretti, to approve request. Ingram?
Yes.
Simansky?
On the question, uh, members of the council, I think they have a work session regarding our options regarding this bridge, so, uh, uh, we can work on that, uh, in the near future, but, uh, I will vote yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Okay, so I've got a motion, uh, it passed five zero. Do you want me to include in the language, uh, schedule a work session?
Yes. Motion to amend to include a work session.
Yep, so it's, it's, it's
Morano second.
Second by, by, uh,
Morano.
Morano to approve request, schedule a work session. So I'll work on that, get you guys together and we'll, we'll, we'll get that going. Uh, number eight. DPW Commissioner requests city council approve the attached ordinance, temporary eliminating parking on Ridge Road between Route Five and Electric Avenue on the eastbound lane for the months of January and February, twenty twenty-one.
Motion to receive and file act on ordinance.
Moretti second.
We've got a motion by Simansky, second by Moretti, to receive and file act on ordinance. Ingram?
Yes.
Simansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Okay, carried five zero, the ordinance temporary amending chapter two fifteen of the City of Lackawanna Municipal Code traffic and vehicles, specifically section two fifteen point four-three, parking, standing, and stopping restriction as it applies to one seventy-seven Ridge Road. To read on both sides, no parking from Hamburg Turnpike to the West Curb Line of Electric Avenue during the month of January and February, two thousand twenty-one. This section supersedes any other provision in this section regarding parking on Ridge Road. This section shall expire on March first, twenty twenty-one, so no further action will be necessary at that time.
Motion to adopt ordinance is written.
Second, Surtike.
I got a motion by Simansky, second by Surtike, to adopt ordinance is written. Ingram?
No.
Simansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
No.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
No.
You see, the motion failed. Three, two. Number nine, DPW Commissioner, request city council approve the attached easement agreement between the City of Lackawanna and Twenty-five Twenty Hamburg Turnpike LLC.
Morano moves to receive and file act on easement.
Moretti second.
Yes, I have a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to, uh, approve request on the easement. Ingram?
Yes.
Simansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero, number ten, city controller requests city council approve the attached ordinance to close out the LED street lighting project and to transfer the reimbursement from National Grid to the general fund.
Motion to receive and file act on ordinance.
Second, Surtike.
I've got a motion by Simansky, second by Surtike, to receive and file act on ordinance. Ingram?
Yes.
Simansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero, the associated ordinance amending the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget ordinance adopted June ninth, two thousand twenty by adding one hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars to the budget code for transfer from other fund capital, increasing the city's fund balance by one hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Increasing the budget code for local revenue by one hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. And increasing budget code for capital fund interfund transfers to the general fund by one hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Adopt ordinance is written.
Second, Surtike.
A motion by Simansky, second by Surtike, to adopt ordinance is written. Ingram?
Yes.
Simansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Crew five zero, number eleven, city controller requests city council approve the attached ordinance to transfer funds to the capital fund to pay for the Milnor and Keever paving project. This project will be utilizing CDBG funding of two hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to receive and file act on ordinance.
Morano seconds.
Motion by Simansky, second by Morano, to receive and file act on ordinance. Ingram?
Yes.
Simansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero, the ordinance amending the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget ordinance adopted June ninth, two thousand twenty by adding two hundred thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighteen cents to the budget code for transfer to other fund capital. Appropriating two hundred thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighteen cents of the city's fund balance. Adding two hundred thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighteen cents to the budget code for CDBG, Milnor, and Keever. And increasing budget code for capital fund, interfund transfers by two hundred thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighteen cents.
Morano moves to accept is written.
Moretti second.
What was that motion?
Accept is written.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So we got a motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt ordinance is written. Ingram?
Yeah.
Simansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero, communications from citizens, number twelve. Marie Edwards, founder and president of Ten Lives Club, sent an email providing the city council with information as to how their organization is assisting Lackawanna residents with their stray cats and personal needs and also assisting residents with spay neuter services of their personal pets or feral cats, which are wild, unsocialized cats. Ten Lives Club is seeking three thousand dollars in remuneration for their services.
Morano moves to receive and file forward for an opinion from this, uh, city attorney.
Second. Simansky?
So I've got a motion by Morano, second by Simansky, receiving file forward to the city attorney for his opinion on payment. Ingram?
Yes.
Simansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero, number thirteen, James Sabuda, resident of Orchard Park, sent a letter to the city clerk's office committing the efforts of Lackawanna Code Enforcement Officer Scott Hayes for caring, carrying himself as a complete and true professional in guiding Mr. Sabuda through a very chaotic morning, uh, October seventh, twenty twenty.
Morano moves to receive and file. We thank both Mr. Sabuda and, uh, Inspector Hayes on this matter.
Moretti second.
We've got a motion by, um, Morano, second by Moretti, receiving file thanking both Mr. Sabuda and Scott Hayes uh, specifically for going above, uh, beyond the call of duty. Ingram?
Yes.
Simansky?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero, number fourteen, Arch J. Patrica, Attorney and Counsel at Law. Request the city council reappoint Nancy Patricas and Mary Vallone as Commissioner of Deeds, terms to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Morano moves to approve as requested.
Second, Simansky.
I have a motion by Morano, second by Simansky, to approve request. Ingram?
Yes.
Simansky?
Yes.
Moretti?[1798.48]
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero, business registrations, Brian O'Hara doing business as Brian O. Tree Sales, which is a seasonal Christmas tree sale. Uh, it is located at fourteen sixty-six Abbott Road.
Motion to approve, Surtik.
Second, Samanski.
A motion by Surtik, second by Samanski, to approve business registration. Ingram?
Yes.
Samanski?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero, Mr. Council President?
Uh, unless there's anything further, I would like, on behalf of the city council, to extend our, uh, best wishes for the upcoming holiday season. Hopefully, everyone stays safe, uh, and healthy. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and happy holidays.
The Bills just have five people going to the Pro Bowl. I second the motion to adjourn.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
I thought you were Santa Claus.
All right, let's take, let's, let's, let's take the vote here, boys and girls.